... indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Burns.
Here.
Reed. Brown.
Here.
Kraus.
Here.
French.
Here.
And Mayor Domingo.
Here, thank you. Presentations, or I'm sorry, getting ahead of myself. Mayors and councilmembers' comments, are there any comments, yes, Eric?
Thank you, Mayor, I have a couple things, the first, notice my name, I want to thank the Sister City Committee for honoring me by naming the market this weekend after me, I really appreciate that, I'm humbled by that.
We said next time we're gonna call it a fringe market.
Much better, thank you. Second, I received a phone message this morning on my phone when I got home from work today claiming to be the IRS and that I had been sued by the IRS, so I returned the phone call and asked for them to identify themselves as the IRS, they hung up. So I'm just setting that out, that obviously our area code and phone number has been discovered in this community by some scammer who is trying to get personal information from our citizens so that they might do some nefarious things with those things like bank accounts, et cetera. So I would urge all of our citizens, the IRS will only contact you by mail, they will never call you unless you call them, so please be very careful, it's that time of year again, so be watchful, it really caught me by surprise. And finally, I would like for the council and our city manager to consider a non-discrimination ordinance over the next couple of weeks or month. The LGBTQ community has received non-discrimination ordinances for thirty-five different cities in the state of Michigan, and those of us who are in support of such ordinances see this as a way to tell those looking for employment or looking to start companies in our town that we are a city of progressiveness and that by stating this ordinance and by having this ordinance, we are protecting all of our citizens regardless of their sexual identity or orientation, as well as anybody else who might feel that they might be discriminated against, so I would ask that we consider having that ordinance in place that we may vote on it sometime this summer.
Yes. I would like to thank Cheryl and the City of Albion for the conference we had today at Albion College concerning bicycles, it was called Wheel Training of the Michigan-
Training Wheels.
Training Wheels of Michigan Department of Transportation, it opened our eyes to a larger perspective of bike trails, bike streetscape, the different types of measures we could use in our lanes, there were particularly three, one on the side of parking, one on the roadway, but Albion needs to really take a good look, I did debate with them concerning the financial aspect of it, which is real tangible, but I do support the bike lanes coming to Albion, thank you. Garrett, did you have something?
I was gonna say the same thing, Garrett.
I planted flowers.
Yeah.
I could not ride a bicycle, so I planted flowers.
I only have one concern, and that's the cemetery.
Oh, right.
You've got a whole lot of work to do up there in a short period of time, I just ran through it tonight before I came to the council meeting, it always has taken priority and it doesn't seem that it's taken priority this year, and it needs to. Memorial Day is Monday, and I know they've been paying overtime and people don't want to work it, if you ask them to work it, they want to call in sick, they don't want to put the time and the effort in to do the city's work what they're paid for, I wish they would turn their keys and their cards in and leave, we'll find somebody that wants to do the work. I'm sorry, but this is uncalled for, when you're asked to do a job that you hired for, start doing it, because it's embarrassing to the community and we don't need that kind of work, yes?
I agree, I went up there because I was placing some flowers and the grass has just been half chopped up and it's all over the markers, it's all over everything, and a lot of it's just all piled up.
Exactly.
Over people's grave markers, and it does not look good at all, I was very upset about it too.
That's all I have. Presentations, we'll start off with the resolution of appreciation to William Wheaton. Resolution of appreciation to William Wheaton, May eighteenth, two thousand and fifteen, whereas William Wheaton has the distinction of being the longest-serving elected official on the current Albion City Council, and whereas he is appointed as council member of the Fourth Precinct to fill a vacant seat from April to December of nineteen ninety-two, and again in June of nineteen ninety-five, beginning, being elected in nineteen ninety-six, and whereas Bill served as a council member to the Fourth Precinct again from nineteen ninety-six to nineteen ninety-nine. Being appointed mayor in September of nineteen ninety-nine, he was elected mayor by the citizens of Albion in two thousand and served as their leader until December of two thousand eight, and whereas in two thousand thirteen, he was again elected as Fourth Precinct Council Member, and whereas Bill has always been an active community member, working with the Boy Scout Cub Scouts, the Albion Ambulance Service, the Festival of the Forks, and that's just to name just a few. And whereas in nineteen ninety-eight, Bill saw a need and undertook the task of designing a new logo for the city, which is still being used today, and whereas Bill Wheaton was best known by the Albion's fifth grade students as the mayor who in the annual Martin Luther King Junior Essay Contest in honor of Black History Month. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Albion City Council, along with the citizens of Albion, appreciate William Wheaton's dedication to his community and to its citizens and wish him well, as he has touched many lives and will be missed by all. Bill? Thank you.
I'll keep my words, excuse me, I'll keep my words a little short, first of all, I wish to thank this council and the previous councils for all the backing and support that we had, Mike Herbert was a great help to me at the time, and Joe has been good here, and we had some city managers that came and went real fast, but it's been a real eye-opening search to work with the public, be involved in the public, and meet so many nice, fine people, and with that, I just want to say that, thank you, now Memorial Day is coming up, remember the cemetery, the soldiers and your loved ones, and everybody have a fine Memorial Day and be safe, and again, thanks to all, thank you.
Might as well just stand.
State Representative John Bison.
Thank you so much for the invitation, Mr. Mayor, to come and join you, I bring a special tribute with me today, it seems like every time I turn around I get to see Cheryl Mitchell at one function or another, in the state, around the state, and it is with great pleasure that I bring the greetings of the governor with me, her work has brought credit to Albion, her work has been noticed by the governor and others throughout the state, and so I bring this special tribute for Cheryl Mitchell, if you could join. I have to admit that I've been calling Ms. Cheryl at work and harassing her, asking for her counsel on various items, and I wanted to read just a couple of lines from the tribute, if I may, for years of service to the people of Greider West Bloomfield, Cheryl Mitchell has been working in the public arena for an era of great change, there can be little doubt that the record of Cheryl Mitchell and her responsibilities as a civic leader over the years will continue to reap rewards for the city of Albion, we offer our thanks on this personal milestone, and it's in special tribute, therefore, this document was signed by Governor Rick Snyder, by Senator Mike Knopf, and myself, dedicated to join with the citizens of Albion and saluting Cheryl Mitchell and acknowledging her outstanding years of public service, may she continue to enjoy her successful career.
I just want to very briefly say thank you to everyone, receiving the Wonder Woman Award was really, it was a highlight of my life's career in serving communities in Oakland County, but to also have this recognition here and to have so many of my friends and supporters from Albion joining that celebration, it really, really warmed my heart, and I'm just thrilled that I'm here to make a difference as well, and nothing I've done in the past or even going in the future, I have not done it alone, it's all been a part of a team, and I'm very thankful to be here in Albion, thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any of them. Who's here for that?
No.
Your Sister City Committee?
Yes.
How you were there, running this? This was the governor's award, which was given for the Bone Theater, they're doing such an outstanding job of rehabilitating it, and Mary Slater and several others were there to do that, and I just want everybody to know that, Mary, aren't you the president?
I'm the secretary of the board.
Okay, so if you would like to further everybody's knowledge of why.
As you all know, the Bone Theater opened first Christmas Day nineteen twenty-nine, it closed in two thousand eight, it was in extreme disrepair, there was concern whether the building itself would hold up, and it was connected to other buildings downtown, there were community meetings about whether we wanted to save it, the community decided to save it, we went about raising funds, it turned out to be almost four million dollars, and I want to say that our debt is only, I mean, it's still a lot, but only two hundred and fifty thousand out of almost four million now. This award was given to the Friends of the Bone Theater, but also to Randy Fisher of Gordo Martin, and to Dick Mitchell, who was the architect, and to the Community Foundation, who also was the fiduciary and provided the support for us, we were one of five places in Michigan that got this award.
Okay, thank you very much. And congratulate everybody on this.
Now Mary Slater. Now Mary Slater for Sister City.
Yeah.
Now you can come back up for your Sisters.
Put on your different hat, Mary.
So, the reason I'm up here in this section of the presentations is related to Albion Week, which was organized, which is being organized by the Chamber, and it's to honor the various wonderful contributions that the city of Albion is making to our community and to our state, and my little piece here was about Sister City because our contribution is about relationships, and we honored Mr. Wheaton here earlier, he was one of the first people that got our Sister City relationship going because of people that he knew in France back from his days of military service, and this whole thing started because of relationships, it wasn't like, okay, let's have a Sister City and pick somebody, it was because we knew people, and people knew us and appreciated what we had to offer in terms of these exchanges, and now we have maybe a hundred or more people every year back and forth, we just had, as you know, the students were up here, they came for the middle school, we've had adult trips, we'll be having younger students come for Summer Dreams Camp, we'll be having three young adults doing internships here in Albion, and of course, we have college students too, so this is a very vibrant, very active kind of Sister City relationship. Mr. Bearman was part of this too, and entertaining the kids.
Basketball, the basketball.
Oh, and the basketball players too, yes, so I could go on and on, but suffice it to say we have something to really be proud of in our Sister City relationship. I have something here.
The City of Albion celebrates Albion Week, May fifteenth through the twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen, whereas Michigan Week is celebrated annually during the second week of May, the end of the state, to recognize our local history, culture, and resources, and whereas the City of Albion is participating in its first of Michigan's Week Bone Celebrations named Albion Week, and whereas residents of Albion and surrounding communities are invited to share in the food, fun, and festivities that will take place during the Albion Week from May fifteenth through the twenty-third, and whereas the Albion City Council recognizes Albion Week and joins with the Greater Albion Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Bureau and saluting our own local history, business, and culture, now therefore, by Joe Domingo, Mayor of the City of Albion, due hereby pro playing May fifteenth through the twenty-third of two thousand and fifteen as Albion Week in Albion, Michigan. And also, from Dr. Bison, we have a big one, that says Albion Week, if you would like to step up here, we'll turn these towards Catherine, and... And we congratulate everybody. Citizens' comments, persons addressing the city council shall limit their comments to agenda items only and to no more than five minutes proper decorum, and this is on the agenda items only, are there any citizens' comments to say, yes, please come forward, your name and address, please?
Good evening, my name is Joanne Conkle, I live at five oh three North Mingle Street and here in Albion, I'm here in support of Becky Decker, known as Rebecca, but I know her as Becky, for the seat of the Fourth Precinct, Becky, over the years, has become very close to me, she is probably the one of the few people that would make a good politician because she sees both sides of the fence, she's raised her family here, she's been part of the community, she's employed here in Albion, pays taxes here, and I think she'd do a wonderful job and be an asset to all of you, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jean Marie Heeman, I live at four twelve Baroque here in Albion, Michigan, I'm here to support Becky Decker as well, and in the immortal words of Smokey Bill Robinson, I second that emotion of the woman from Mingle Street, Becky has lived, been our neighbor for over twenty years, and yes, she does see both sides of the fence, she will not hesitate to tell me when I'm out of line, and so, and we remain friends, so I think, even though she's not in my, she's on the other side of the street of Baroque, so she's not in my district, but I, or precinct, rather, I fully support her as a representative.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Slow, but...
Take your time, take your time.
My name is Charlie Jones, and I live at twelve twenty-six Adam Street here in the City of Albion, and I know Becky through my wife and our animals, she takes care of them, and I've known her, I guess, I would say, over ten years, in the time we've been going there, I know her as one who has a deep feeling for individuals, what am I saying? I'm saying when my wife had surgery, she was right there, calling on the phone, how is Mitty doing, is anything I can do, that's kind of going beyond, and that's somebody I can call friend, so I'm supporting her, I think she would do a marvelous job in that, and see, I didn't take a lot of time. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Temple Sobal, five oh seven Baroque Street, I am here in support of Becky Decker, who's been my neighbor for fifteen years, and I just got to say, before I talk more about Becky, I am so proud of Albion, I'm so proud to be a product of this place, I'm just excited about it, but anyways, back to what I'm here for, Becky, she has been a wonderful neighbor of fifteen years for me, I've been in her home, at her table, we've talked about different issues, and you're right, the other neighbor, we have a wonderful neighborhood, by the way, it's just a lovely place, Baroque is the place to be, but anyways, Becky, well, we can sit and we can discuss and we can agree to disagree, but the one thing I love about her is she is just there, she's there for the neighbors, she's there for the support you need in good and bad, and she believes in Albion, she believes in this place, she didn't leave, she stayed, her kids stayed, her kids went to school, I watched her kids go through high school, I watched them go and come back, that kind of role model was good for me, it was good for me to want to support my kids with the Albion pride that comes from Becky and that family, so I give her all my support.
Thank you. Are there any more this evening? Thank you, we'll move on to the consent calendar, approval of regular session minutes from May fourth, two thousand and fifteen.
So moved.
Support. Moved and supported, were there any questions? No questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same? Passed, thank you. Items for individual discussion, interviews with precinct number four candidates. I have to dig through here, and... So we'll start with Becky, Lindsey, and Ladonna, okay? Becky Decker, if you would like to come forward and speak about yourself and precinct four, please?
Hi, thank you for allowing me to speak with all of you, my name is Becky Decker, I live at six oh one Baroque Street in Albion, I've lived here with my family for over twenty-five years, I honestly have to tell you, when we first moved here, I was a little nervous, we'd never lived in a small town, and obviously have created wonderful friendships, and we're so lucky, it's become a place that I brag about, a place that I invite people to come and visit, my husband's been with the department for, I think, twenty-six years, serving as a public safety officer, he's very proud of the job, he's proud of the people he works for, and he's proud of the city, I've been with, excuse me, Erwin Avenue Animal Hospital for nearly twenty-three years, during which time I started out working in the kennels, and I'm now a practice manager, I believe that part of what I can contribute is compromise, my job at the clinic is to try to find solutions that make everyone happy, a lot of emotions tend to run high at the hospital because people care so deeply about what's going on with their pets, so basically, my main concern there is that everyone leave feeling peaceful and finding both sides, being able to discuss options, listening is the key ingredient I find with my job, I've met wonderful people through my job at the college, I've met wonderful people through the city, I have a good relationship with Scott Kip because of my job as far as the impound manager of the hospital with stray dogs, I think Albion can be amazing, I think it is amazing now, I'm so excited about all the changes and everything that's coming in the next few months to a few years, you guys have done an amazing job, the college has opened doors that I never dreamed of, I can't claim that I have all these wonderful ideas, but I'll listen to anything and I'll support anything I can and help in any way I can, thank you very much.
Thank you. Lindsey Washburn.
Thank you for having me, I'm Lindsey Washburn, I live at two ten Colfax Street here in Albion, I've been here two and a half years, and while it's not as long as twenty-five or twenty-six years, I have enjoyed my time here, and I feel that I have a vigor for people, I love to help people, and I want to be more involved in the community, and this would be an excellent place to start with that, I work in insurance in Jackson, so I don't work here in town, but in the insurance business, you work with a lot of different people, a lot of different types of businesses, so I have a lot of experience working with different people, different businesses, things like that, so I think it would be an excellent start to becoming a better part of the community and a more involved part, I don't have any specific ideas for helping Albion at this time, but I know as I get involved and start working with fine folks, it would be a lovely working relationship, so thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Ladonna Simpson. Thank you, John.
Good evening, everybody, my name is Ladonna Simpson, and I live at two hundred South Monroe, apartment twenty, I have been a resident here for almost majority of my life, I left in nineteen eighty-five, and I came back in nineteen ninety-four due to being in the military, but other than that, I do work at Allegiance Health, I've been there for a little over nine years, working in the mental health area, so I understand a little bit about everybody, even the abnormal and normal, but other than that, other than that, I'm just want to, you know, help out my city as much as I can, even though I'm not here as much because I'm at work, but that's just me, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Pardon? Are there any questions from the council? I'm sorry. We good to go? Okay. Those were the three candidates? Oh, I'm sorry, Garrett, go ahead.
I'm going to ask a question, I guess it's for all candidates, but I'm going to make it quick, so one of the things that I've discovered on councils that you are presented with making decisions about issues that you might not fully know about, right, so you have to figure out, learn, my question is, what process do you use to, if you don't My question is, what process do you use to, if you don't know something, to, to figure that out, right? So, that's, that's, that's my question is, you know, if you're learning a new, new information or something like that, what's your thought process or what do you do to try to pick up information?
Being in the age where technology is everything, I think it's important to do research on news articles, read through the paper, talk with neighbors, community members, and family members who also mean a lot, discuss with the people that you work with because they always have different opinions, and kind of gather a general knowledge on the subject. And then especially in this case, talk with your precinct members and see how they feel about the topic, to see how you can best represent them.
Thank you. Thank you. Becky, you're.
Excuse me, ma'am. May I call for a point of order? I have in my packet that there were four candidates. Mr. Kemp is here, and he wasn't called, and I, I never clarified that he, precinct four council applications due, and it said his was back by 4/17, and he's here to be interviewed.
I'm under the impression that there was something on the application. That was not correct.
Was he notified?
Pardon?
Was he notified that he wasn't going to be interviewed?
I don't know.
I did not notify him.
Okay. Oh, he's not a registered voter in precinct four?
Oh, okay.
That's what that was.
I just wanted to get some clarity before we move forward, so he would understand what's going on.
Becky, were you on yet?
Hi, I would have to agree that, you know, reading, checking the internet, but I find that talking with people, getting advice from people who've had experience. I've actually spoken with Mr. Wheaton several times and told him that I would be throwing myself at his feet for any advice that he might have. So, if I don't know something, I'm the first one to seek out any possible source. I will admit, usually I seek out people before technology. I am comfortable with the internet, but not as much as I enjoy people.
Thank you.
As far as for myself, I will look on the internet. Like she said, we have the technology that we have. And also, I will also ask a lot of the members for the help that I need to understand what's going on and how to approach a situation. That's me, so.
Thank you. No further questions?
I have one.
Yes, Cheryl.
Well, I would be remiss if I did not ask this question because every forum I've ever been to, I've been asked this question. And that is, Becky, with Richard being on the public safety department, if you run into a situation where the two of you don't see eye to eye on a situation, how are you going to handle that, both in your personal and your professional life?
Well, professionally, I would abstain from any vote that Richard might benefit from. I would not, I would listen. I might offer an opinion. I won't fib. I tend to do that. But I would absolutely abstain. At home, I have four dogs. He wanted me to have one, so.
We just don't talk about it. Don't at the table. I understand. Thank you.
Are we good? Dee. Nomination's an appointment to fill precinct number four. Cheryl?
I'd like to place Becky Decker in nomination for the position of fourth precinct.
Support.
Been nominated, moved in support. Are there any questions? Further questions? If not, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Kraus.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Burns.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes, I had asked, can I clarify something? Because I was trying to get your attention. I, I know that I had asked Mr. Simpson because I know she's a, a very good person who, who wanted to see Albion progress, but I didn't get your attention at any time to ask if there could be more than one nomination. I know with send die, with the mayor for Tim, it can only be one, can only be one. Yes.
Mayor Domingo.
Yes. Congratulations, Becky Decker. Could you swear in before to June?
How do you say?
Do you want to swear her in before?
We could swear in right now.
Okay, but you can do it during the week. Okay? And then she can take her seat.
Swear you in before you can sit.
For the first part of June. Okay. Thank you all very much. See, request approval, City of Albion's local match for the CDBG blight elimination grant. So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Are there any questions? Yes, Andy?
This is the, this is for home demolition?
Yes.
Yes, it is. This is related to, I think it's the 32 property.
32 homes, yep.
Through the community development block grant that have been identified for demolition in Albion. And we discussed this during the budget process, but I don't remember an actual motion to approve our, our match in regards to that grant. So, I wanted you to take formal action today.
Thank you.
Any further questions? If not, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Kraus.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Burns.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo.
Yes, thank you. Discussion on trains going through town carrying hazardous waste.
Is Chief Kip here?
Chief Scott Kip, Albion Public Safety.
Well, I asked for this item to come on so the public would know about the trains that come through our, our city, the ones that we do have the information that are hazardous that's coming from Lansing to Battle Creek to Chicago. Am I correct?
The trains carrying crude oil that were in question are headed to Sarnia to their, and so they do go up through Battle Creek through Lansing to Port Huron.
There has been some incidents prior to the most recent one, and I was concerned about the different hazardous materials that come through Albion right here through our train station that we don't have knowledge about. I was informed that some of that may have a privacy right where they're not sharing it with our local law enforcement officials. And I had asked our city manager and our chief to take a look at some of the ways you might be able to find out that information. And I just want the public to know that we are taking a look at trying to find ways to discover what's coming in so our public safety can be prepared ahead of time to approach those situations. And that's why I asked for this, and I will continue to do research in tandem with these two officials. Thank you.
Yes, Cheryl.
Am I incorrect in my assumption that the numbers that are on the sides of the cars identify what's in the cars?
That's correct. And if we couldn't identify what those numbers were, we could have immediate contact with the railroad who would identify what exactly the cargo was of that train coming through at any time. Dispatch has those numbers and can contact them immediately. Certain trains have placards on them, and our emergency guidebook will tell us exactly what's in those, but certain trains don't have the placards on them, and in those cases, those numbers would tell us what's in those cars.
Thank you.
Yes, Carol?
Just because we're on the topic of hazardous waste, I'm sure the city has to have like a, I mean, we don't have a emergency management officer.
Yeah, technically we do. Lieutenant Johnson would be that, in that position.
Okay, okay. So, so if something were to.
Right. But something this size with a train derailment would automatically go to the county emergency management. They'd be in charge of that at that point. I'd still be in charge as incident commander regardless of all the resources that came. We have the resources here. All of our firefighters are certified as hazmat awareness. We have a couple that are technicians. Battle Creek has a full hazmat team along with Jackson, Summit Township, Lansing. So, there's plenty of resources around, and then our affiliation with Mavis now will also provide those resources to us. The cleanup of itself would be a responsibility of the railroad at that point, so.
Thank you. Cheryl?
One of the other things that I wanted to clarify with you, Chief, is we keep hearing about high-speed rail, high-speed rail, high-speed rail. When they speak of high-speed rail, they're talking more about the Amtrak trains rather than anything that's carrying hazardous materials. Am I right?
Correct. The speeds for freight trains won't change. And from my understanding and talks with Amtrak and with MDOT, the highest speeds we possibly could see here in Albion is 50 miles an hour, and they're still talking lower than that because of the curves and the turns here in town, so.
Yes. The key for me with this is the scheduling. We have no information on the times that these hazardous materials may come through. That would makes it paramount that we be prepared because even the chief can't get the schedule of when these hazardous materials are coming through our town. And in every situation, they are not properly marked.
As far, what do you mean by we? You talking about the citizens?
Yes. But my, my key is I just want our public safety to be aware and try, you know, see if we can find out some.
I guess you should have asked Dr. Bisonfall, he was here. He could have taken it back to the state and asked, what's the problem with the, you know? I mean, ahead of time, we should know if there's any hazardous, but if anybody's ever worked with the railroad, it's a joke.
I mean, they, they own that property, not the city. All the crossings are theirs. I mean, they totally have control of where it runs and what they do with it, so.
Yes.
Just so the council's aware that the Federal Department of Transportation and the Hazardous Materials Safety Administration and Federal Railroad Administration very recently, as we may first, adopted a new rule regarding the transporting of hazardous materials, speed for the trains, vehicle marking, information sharing, that my understanding just took effect this month.
So, those regulations hopefully should be coming down, but if you don't hear anything, we should pursue.
And a lot of those changes are a result of some of the accidents they've had recently with the crude oil derailments. So, hopefully, we'll be getting more of that information, especially when there's certain hazardous materials that are transported through here.
Okay.
Well, for me, it's important that with all of the placemaking we're doing, even the bicycle tour we did today, attracting people to Albion, I would like to see a template where they can see we're prepared for different situations, and we are a sustainable community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Request approval for the first reading of the ordinance, 2015-2, amendment to the chicken ordinance.
Should I, should I?
Do I have a motion?
No, I have a.
Oh.
I will move.
Support.
Okay. Now, do I have any questions? Yes, Andy.
So, I read through this and actually didn't find my old version, so what changed?
The change is essentially if you have less than one acre, you would go from being allowed four female chickens to five. And if you have more than, if your lot is larger than one acre, you would go from being allowed six female chickens to seven. So, from four and six to five and seven.
So, I, so I asked that Dr. Mitchell and the administration look into this. There were some residents who approached me about it, and I'm going to have John Tracy come up and, and, and address. From my understanding, there haven't been any major issues. I mean, there, there have been.
Rooster.
The rooster issue.
Rooster.
But the, the, the residents who approached me.
Well, I think a lot of that is because a lot of people don't understand it doesn't take a rooster to do the eggs, man.
Yeah, yeah. So, so, you know, I approached and so wanted to bring it to the council. So, have there been any major issues? How many permits have been?
John Tracy, zoning, planning, building, and code. Really, there hasn't been any major issues at all, or really issues, other than basically individuals who are renowned and bring a rooster into town. There's some individuals that are not aware that you do need to have a permit to keep female chickens too. Or the reason for the increase in chickens is for the increase of eggs. I don't know if Cheryl's going to laugh at me. But primarily, on average, a female chicken will lay anywhere from 250 to 300 eggs a year. This breaks down about 4.8 to 5.7 eggs a week. So, if you have four chickens, you're going to have so many eggs. If you have five, you're going to increase that sum, so. And I think that's, increasing it by one is not asking much for what the result is.
How many permits have we given out for chickens?
We've, we've only had three actual permits. We've had a number of cases where people had started bringing chickens in, and when we presented them with the application, they've primarily just gotten rid, rid, rid of the chickens. And same thing with a few roosters.
Yes, Andy?
Not wanting to lay an egg on this. I think I read in there that you're not allowed to process the chickens.
You are not allowed to process chickens.
So, then who would process in this area said chicken unless you're keeping them as principally egg support? That's it?
It's for eggs, yes. It's for eggs.
Wow, this seems like a kind of chicken feed for us, so.
And the chickens are, are required, for each chicken, it's required not to be over 11 square feet, so. And there's a distance from the next door property and also from residential houses.
Thank you. This is not a feather-brained resolution.
So, I'm assuming that you have the approval.
Well, as to the vote, well, this was initiated at the request of, I think it was two residents in the community who did want to increase the egg production. They, quite honestly, they asked for a higher level. They wanted to go to 608. But since this was only been in place about a year, we thought it would be more reasonable to just take an incremental step. And also, I learned from Mr. Tracy that the other alternative for increasing egg production is because it's generated by the photocells in their eyes, is to give them more light throughout the day so that days longer, and then they lay more eggs.
Maybe we should have a class on chickens because I thought it had to be a rooster in order to bake a chicken. But I understand.
Well, we need, we need to get a rest of this issue.
I'm not understa-
Okay.
This is bad. Getting really bad.
We've laid enough eggs here. So, we'll go ahead and have a roll call vote.
Councilmember French.
Yes.
Burns.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Kraus.
Yes.
Mayor Domingo.
Were you about ready to chicken out?
There you go.
Yes. Future agenda items.
The, the nondiscrimination ordinance?
Yes.
And I think I've shared with Colin some language already.
I might, I need your help, John. Those stockade fences that are, at the posts facing the public that I complained about, we don't have an ordinance for it, and I want to get an ordinance. Those stockade fences, they got the posts facing the public.
As far as when it comes on to privacy fences, the six-foot tall, we ask that the nicer side is out, but there's not anything specifically saying that it has to be.
And that's what I'm asking for. So, how would I say the specific ordinance to have the?
To have the. Have the post side bend towards the residents who directs the fence. And then the finish side facing abiding properties and, and or street.
Existing fences would be grandfathered, right?
Yes.
This seems a little silly.
Any further agenda items?
Would it be silly? I mean, we're looking at streetscape and my place placemaking, and if there's an eyesore in the neighborhood, that would be silly.
But I would, yeah. We'll talk about it when it comes to.
Can Holland Park be put on the agenda for next?
Yes.
Holland Park update? Okay. If there is no further, we'll have a motion to excuse. We don't have to because we're all here. Citizens comments. Persons addressing the city council, show them at their comments. In no more than five minutes, proper decorum is required. Citizens comments. Is there anybody in the, in the city, in the audience that wants to come up and? Citizens' comments. Is there anybody in the con, in the city, in the audience that wants to come up and?
Hi, Janice Best, seven ten South Eaton Street.
Laurie Grinnell, pastor of Salem United Church of Christ, one thirteen West Pine Street.
And we're here with Albion Rainbow Connection and talking about a proposed nondiscrimination ordinance for LGBT people for, um, uh, employment, housing, and public accommodation. Um, there are thirty-eight other cities that have it and we want to get it here in Albion. And Andy supports it and as far as I know, the rest of the council supports it, so we'd like to do that. I don't know if any of them were, um, information about it. We got, uh, community support. And we have, um, some, um, draft, um-
Ordinances.
Ordinances as well, so. Do you wanna say?
Okay, I think it's really an important thing to do as a community because it says that this is a safe place for all people to live. Discrimination is an ugly, ugly thing in whatever form it takes. And there is no reason in this day for any person to be at risk of losing their job for who they are or being refused housing or being denied use of a public restroom or being denied use of any other public facility. I think it's important for Albion to stand with the other thirty-eight communities in this state as frontrunners in providing true equality for all people. Um, it is not a political thing. It is not a religious thing. It is a human thing.
And you have a draft drawn up of?
Yeah, I'll, I'll be sure you get it.
Okay, alright. May I have your name again? I'm sorry.
Laurie Grinnell.
Grinnell?
G-R-I-N-N-E-L-L.
Thank you.
Laurie is L-O-R-E-E.
At the college.
It gotta be difficult.
Okay, alright, okay.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to know what are we doing for Memorial Day?
You're doing what on Memorial Day?
To know what, what's going on.
Memorial Day?
Right, but I mean-
Ten o'clock parade. Everybody lines up behind the stores downtown. I do believe the American Legion is in charge of that like normal.
Yes, the lineup is at nine thirty. Um, the parade is at ten and there's a luncheon at twelve noon at the American Legion.
Yes, sir.
Yes, uh, good, good, good evening. My name is Johnny Hill. My mother owns seven ten North Ann Street. And, uh, I went to junior high and high school here. Uh, I struck up some dialogue and tried to contact some folks at City Hall. I've been helped, uh, briefly by Ms. Reed concerning Mr. Zick and his property. At seven ten North Ann Street, as you know, who approved through City Council, he has been able to purchase the, the lots that go from seven ten Ann Street all the way down to Chestnut Street. Now, originally when my grandfather built that property back in nineteen and forty-six, he built it with his bare hands. That and seven oh eight where they built a couple other, uh, properties, uh, we didn't have that. I think Zick wasn't even there at the time. Uh, he's been approved, I guess, to make now when we look at, when we look out our back door, we see semi trucks. Uh, at one time he parked a, uh, tore up camper out there. He currently has a vehicle parked, a truck where the axles are showing with no license tags on there. It's been out there for over a year. What we also look at every day is, it used to be, again, this property's been in the family since about nineteen and forty-six. Now, when we look out our back sun porch, we see semi trailers, trucks, his business going in and out. I went over there and talked to Mr. Zick several months ago about seeing if he can extend that fence that he has all the way forward. Well, he told me he didn't have any money. He was real flippant about it. He was real rude about it. Now, I find that that he was just blowing me off because he's steady purchasing property, he's steady expanding his business. I don't know what's behind that twenty-foot-high fence, but I do know and gotta have enough common sense to realize that if you're storing vehicles back there, it's gonna leak transmission fluid, it's gonna leak oil, it's gonna leak gasoline. So now we have a contamination of soil. It's always, it's already gonna bring down your property value because now when you show up to try and sell the home, and I know the property values went down, but now you look out and you say, well, what's that business back there? What's that semi truck back there? What's behind that twenty-foot fence? I talked to another neighbor, I guess now he's expanding his business again where he'll be crunching cars and selling them for scrap. But again, he doesn't have any money, so I'm asking council, city manager, mayor, to maybe you can help us at seven ten North Ann. Again, that property has been there owned by my mother, her father, who built it with his hands since around about nineteen and forty-six. He's built several other homes on there as well when people used to help one another in the community. And Albion was a much closer community, which seems like we're trying to get back to, which is good. Uh, to help us, see if we can either get him to move that fence further forward so we don't have to look at his property. We'd like to know what's behind the fences, uh, in case we ever try and sell. And any conscious homeowner would wanna know, well, what's behind those fences over there? And it's, it's gonna bring your property value down. Uh, so these are the concerns that you have. Uh, my mother was born in thirty-four, so she's eighty-some years old. It's an issue for her, it's an issue for me, it's an issue for my sister. So if you guys, if I could call some of you, you guys can get back with me. I have no problem with that. I'm accessible, uh, and I appreciate your help. Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Johnny. Give me your number for you.
Hello, I'm Charlie Fulbright. I live at one thirty-two Maurerson Drive in Battle Creek, Michigan, four nine oh one seven. Um, I'm actually not a resident of Albion, uh, but I do have friends that, uh, live in this great city. I'm here today to tell you how important and crucial I think this nondiscrimination ordinance is. I helped Battle Creek pass their nondiscrimination ordinance a few years back. The ordinance will protect all its citizens from, from discrimination. I know lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender people exist in Albion and should have the same allotted rights as all its other citizens. I strongly encourage you all to be on the right side of history and follow suit as the thirty-eight other states, thirty-eight other cities in Michigan have adopted a nondiscrimination ordinance for LGBT people in Michigan. Albion should be number thirty-nine. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
He's got handouts.
Mike Bearman, one one oh one six twenty-nine Mall Road. Like I told Bill back when I got elected in, I will be here on the second meeting of every month. But anyway, what I've got for you is handouts from senior services. This is new right off the press. They just got them very recently.
This is nice.
You can use that.
This is nice.
And I've got more for people to check up later if you want them. But a couple things. I just got done with a public hearing on Area Agency on Aging, which I'm on their board also. Trying to do things for the community of Albion and on the east side of the county, all the way around. Trying to get everybody to work together. As you notice, I like to collect pins. And I've got a new one on. You say, well, what's that, what's that? This is the Silver Key Pen, which is an advocacy program for seniors. Um, so we need to get involved with that. Also, on June second is Older Michigan, Michiganders Day or Michiganyans Day up at the state Capitol. And I just found out that there is gonna be a bus going up, um, from Area Agency on Aging. So we're gonna be up there in, um, support for older, um-
Citizens.
Citizens to be able to do, you know, the advocacy that we need to have done. So we're working on a lot of different things over at the county. We're, um, looking forward to a lot of things going on. We, we really appreciate all that Albion's doing and we wanna be partner, partners with everybody, so. That's what we're out trying to do, yes.
Mike, this, um, this is very nice, by the way, but where are these going to be available for people?
There are, um, I've got them right now. I'm gonna try to get more out and get them to different places and drop some off here.
I'm thinking the, the pharmacies would be a good place and the library would be a good place.
Okay, and I've-
Senior center.
Laura Stevens from the senior, um, millage. She's been going around to townships with me and she's been taking them and handing them out to the townships around also. So what we're trying to do, we're trying to make sure that everybody gets to talk to everybody. And in the past, they would come in, drop them on your counter and leave and nobody would ever get a chance to see them or know about them. Um, I was just talking to Carla today and she says, we need to be able to bring different things, not monthly, but periodically to the different townships and cities and village to be able to keep things in front of you guys so you know what's going on with what we're trying to do. And I'm changing my hat a little bit. Putting in three new pieces of playground equipment early June. Um, we'll be, um, digging for that. I really have to commend the city manager for pedaling all over town now. She's just, she's out there on her bike with her hel, helmet on and just really being seen out there. Really, really wanna thank, say thanks for all that you're doing with that. The schools went out and looked at, um, Smart Labs a week ago and that. So are we getting them right now? No, because they cost a lot of money, but if we can find some money from somebody that wants to donate to the Smart Labs, we, you know, we're looking and we all always wanted to stay one step ahead of, um, where we need to be. And that's what we're trying to do. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Yes, Cheryl?
Commissioner Bearman?
Yes.
Um, first, I, I, well, one, in regards to the senior services, I want to thank you because I know it's a lot of your facilitation that is having them, senior services taught in AAA, um, as well as our fork senior center working together collaboratively. And because of that, some of those services will be housed locally, um, that you see here in the brochure, as well as, um, enabling them to hire a full-time director. And I know that's in large part because of your involvement and making sure everyone's communicating with each other and I want to thank you. And also I want to thank you because I put him in charge of the weather for this weekend because Saturday and today, it was supposed, we had a seventy cent, seventy percent chance of rain. So I told him he was in charge of the weather and he came through. So, so for our Saturday event, the bike safety as well as the community ride, it was dry and we had a really good turnout. Over twenty-five people participated in the ride. And I want to take just a brief moment to also thank our sponsors. Um, Team Active, they provided us with a bike that we raffled off and we also had helmets, um, that were provided by Allegiance Health. And the mayor himself also made a donation for the helmets. And, um, what's it, OTW, I forget what it's, R stands for, but anyway. On the way or something, bikes. And our city staff, our departments, recreation, um, public works, um, public safety. We have public safety out on bikes with us and they helped to, you know, make sure the streets, the streets were safe for us to cross. And it was really a great time held by everybody. All of our, um, Michigan Works Youth were also there participating. And it was really a lot of fun and we ended up at the French Market and it was phenomenal. There were so many people there, so much fun, music, um, good food and lots of, um, products to buy. So we're looking forward to doing this again next year. There's still, um, ongoing activities for the rest of the week, so it's a lot to celebrate in Albion, so we're really thrilled to have Albion Week. Oh, and we have the selection of the logo for the bike program. It was submitted by Mike Shelgren and it's called Hit the Bricks and Ride the River. So it's a really nice logo. We have some t-shirts already printed up, so we're really thrilled to get this started. There'll be some ongoing rides throughout the summer, so we encourage everyone to participate in those as we go forward.
And, and along the same line, we're supposed to have a meeting with the county, um, road department to work out what we, where we want bicycle trails to be in the future. Because we know we don't have the money. We need to get the roads fixed first. But when we fix roads and can get the money to put in bike trails, we need to do it because that's the cheapest way we can ever get it done is to do it as a going, not to try to just go out and, and put them in from scratch. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Well, Cheryl, I was really glad, you know, because I was talking to the Lord about this groundbreaking thing that we were gonna have, but I can talk to you now.
No, I talked to Mr. Bearman. He's in charge of the weather.
Please.
Hello, I'm Tricia Franzen. I live at four twelve Borough Street. And I wanna speak in support of the nondiscrimination ordinance. When I moved here twenty-three years ago, I was like Becky. I was a little freaked out. I had never lived in a small town before. And I was moving here as a single lesbian mother, also sort of as the official feminist at the college because I was chair of the Women and Gender Studies Program. And I really didn't know what to expect, but I found that this town was completely accepting. I was overwhelmed by that. Uh, whether it was working with the soccer AYSO group or whether it was working with Johnson Child Care and eventually running for school board, working with the school district. I found a wonderful degree of acceptance. That's why we're still here. I just think we need to make it official. We are a very accepting and tolerant community and I think it's really time to put it on the books and let everyone know that we are. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sean Welker, uh, six eleven East North Street, not to be confused with six eleven East Porter Street, although we get a lot of the colleges mail. I come before you today in support of the nondiscrimination policy, uh, which I believe was introduced today by Councilman French. Thank you, Mr. French. I believe that this policy is about everyday people, everyday Albionites. We want the same chances as everyone else to pursue health and happiness, earn a living, be safe in their community, be civically and socially engaged, and to take care of the ones they love. This is not about gay people. This is not about transgendered people. This is not about straight people. It's about all of us. Simply put, all hardworking people in our city, including gay and transgender people, should have the chance to earn a living and provide for themselves and their families. Albion has a long history of celebrating diversity and embracing inclusion. And I applaud the city's efforts on taking up this nondiscrimination ordinance. While this may be new and challenging to talk about, I'm sure that we can all agree that nobody should have to live in fear, that they can be unfairly treated simply because of their sexual orientation or gender identity. I sincerely urge passes of this policy as a continued step toward an Albion that is more open, inclusive, and loving of all its residents. Thank you.
Any other citizens' comments? See none? I'd like to just remind everybody that next Monday is Memorial Day. Please shake hands or say thank you to a vet. Remember a vet? Men and female and animals. They're all worth it. They all do a wonderful job and that's why we stay free. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
Roll call for boys' vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you all very much.
Thanks, Joe.